Great. Okay, welcome everybody to a special meeting of the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority. We have two primary items on the agenda this special meeting that we'll be asking for action on. And I want to start by just simply calling the meeting to order and turn to Martha to do our roll call of the Heritage Area Authority members that present and see if we have a quorum already or hopefully coming in fast. So go ahead Martha.
Thanks Secretary. Alright, starting with the roll call, Secretary Rebecca Flora.
Here.
Melissa Archer. Julie Shablitzky.
Here.
Luis Cardona. Hillary Bell. Jeffrey Newman. Elizabeth Hughes.
Here.
Roland Agbede. Peter Ramsey. Pete Lesher.
Present.
Thank you. Nathan Brown.
Here.
Sandy Turner.
Here.
Nicholas Redding.
Here.
Thank you. Chief Donna Abbott.
Here.
Thank you. Jonathan Hughes. Tara Clifford.
Here.
Luana Holland Moore.
Here.
Thank you. And Dennis Doster.
Here.
Thanks.
We do have quorum and Secretary Flora, I wanted to report that our three newest members have all been confirmed are able to vote today.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you Ariane. And I just wanna, clearly I see your name, but I want to remind everybody that we are recording this call and we are not utilizing the chat because just we need to kind of focus on the visual verbal. So yeah, appreciated. We want to just start putting stuff in there as the official call and then obviously we will have a public comment portion of the meeting. So the rest of the time during the meeting, appreciate it if it's the authority members only that are raising hands during the quarter of the meeting and being acknowledged to timeframe we allow for public comment. So with that Hillary, you're handling this up already. What can I do?
Yeah, I just wanted, I was a few minutes late, so I just wanted to make sure that you saw I was here.
Appreciate it.
I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do want to acknowledge before we jump in is to just send out a shout out to the passages of Western and the flooding that's going on in Western Maryland. I know the governor's going there later today and I've been in touch with our Appalachia Regional Commission team out there also to try to stay in touch with what's happening out there. And so, you know, I hope everyone's safe that may be on the call from that area and we're clearly staying, monitoring that whole situation. I know the governor will be there later to talk with folks and see what else is needed from that standpoint. So our thoughts are with you all in Western, Western Maryland. So, so let me dive into the first item. What we're going to do are the two presentations of the two action items. This is a special meeting and then we'll have public comment to provide additional information for the authority to consider. And then we'll be looking toward a motion to take action on those two items, which include the strategic plan that we reviewed in detail at our last meeting and then the boundary amendment to the Anacostia Trail Heritage Area that we could hold the public meeting on as required last week and that will be presenting that a little bit later. And so, and that's being a special meeting, the primary focus of why we are holding it together today and welcome to our new members that are now official voting members. Welcome. And we are going to jump in and we're going to start with the strategic plan. Since I believe most, everybody, you know, has had this now for quite some time. We did roll through it page by page of the last meeting. What we're going to focus on at this meeting and thank you to the staff and the consultants and everybody for doing the updates that were necessary as an outcome of the last meeting and making it easy for us to identify those areas that were discussed at the last meeting. And so what we're going to do is just roll through to those areas that are highlighted. We'll go through, through those and, and then I'll sort of take collectively any additional comments or questions anyone has on this before we end that presentation and go to the next presentation. So obviously just starting out, yep, new date because if we are able to approve this today, it'll be effective as of today. Letter is the same. Keep going. Hopefully you're all okay with the letter. Keep going. Executive summary. And, and we can go back. Now, we did have questions around the organizational framework. Some changes were made to this to make it, I think, I think just read better for everyone because it is a complicated structure in many ways for us to try to get it, you know, probably never going to be perfect at everyone's standards, but to try to at least frame the various parts of the whole entire Heritage Areas Program. And I'll turn to Ariane on this one to maybe flag anything in particular and what the thinking was, some of the changes that were made to this from last time.
I'm sure. Thanks Secretary Flora. Really the only thing that was added was the, the clarifiers under the headings to just further, you know, state relationship and make it more clear how each of the entities are in relationship with each other. The bottom bubble did change from one, just it said grantees and we separated out the project grantees and the mini grantees to recognize that the heritage areas have direct relationship with those mini grantees. And otherwise, the clarifiers that are under the headings are really stated in the narrative that's in the slide before, but it was just to bring it over onto this more visual organizational framework.
Right. Any questions on, on this revision? Comments or we move along? Okay. Let's get to the next one where we had some, really just some, some word nuancing changes, edits, no major overhauls or anything. But you can see that those are all highlighted here. Once again, I don't have a sense of the layer level of detail, so please raise your hand if people have questions or anything. But these were the changes that were made in response to the comments that we did receive at the last meeting. So I'll just pause again to see if there's any additional comments or questions regarding some of these edits that were in response to our last meeting. Okay, we'll move to the next slide then. I'm kind of running out of the assumption everybody's had this. And so if you have questions, you would be ready with them. And so if I'm moving too fast, anyone, let me know. So the next slide, number seven here, oh, 10 on the left side. By 10, once again, we've just highlighted some of the clarifying language that had come up during the comments at the last meeting. Once again, questions, comments on any of these changes that were made? Just wanted to make sure everyone knows what those were. Okay. We'll go to our next slide then. And this is around engagement and participation. Once again, clarifying language words that mattered to people. And in, in referencing, I know there was a comment around coordinating team meetings and there was some discussion around that. We've highlighted the fact that there were four of them in total, just to be, you know, very clear about what occurred there and who was involved. Questions, comments on any of these changes? Okay. We'll keep moving then. And then actually we're doing pretty good for several slides at this point, all the way up to priority two. And that was just one minor change from last time for additional eight funding opportunities for heritage areas and special initiatives. Just trying to clarify specifically what those would be about, I think. So it was very much more clear that it wasn't a big fundraising effort, but it was more specific for this. Questions here from the authority? Okay. I won't keep going. Priority four. The word analyze was added. We began to just kind of create a little bit more detail there. Questions, just throw up your hand if you have any. Okay, next item is statewide vision. And this is sort of the overall, really what we just went over. So this is just the same thing flagged again, except now there's a composite of all of that. Though we just touched on those obviously previously. And then the glossary of terms, we did get the updated language from the coalition regarding that definition and we incorporated that. And then a few of the other specifics that came out of last times of the comment and authority comments. Seeing any hands go up there. Okay, I think the next one we can get to, once again, just some updates. These are really just fact for accuracy. So that one's pretty straightforward. And again, update for accuracy on the thank you slide. And so that's pretty much it. Well, is it? It was everything that you all have seen for quite some time now, flagging those responses that were made to the last meeting and just wanting to kind of put those out in front of you. So we will have the public comment time where you may have additional information before we take a vote that you'll want to consider. But before we move on from this and into our next presentation, are there any additional questions or comments from the authority? And once again, you'll, you'll have a chance again at this, but in terms of the edits that you're seeing or the overall plan that we will be asking the authority to take a vote on after the public comment. Okay, not seeing any. Please tell me if I'm missing anything, anybody, but it looks like we're good. So with that, I'm really excited to go to our next presentation. This will be new information for you all. And Ned Boko's gonna present that one. I was really excited to be at the public hearing and help share that last week and spend some time down that way. Really impressed by the activity as a chair you will be as Meg walks you through this boundary expansion. And I just personally want to applaud the work that's been done to really pull this together as a countywide effort. And, you know, learn, keep, I keep learning more and more about all of these different heritage areas and this one, I'm sure you'll agree is really, it's really fun and it's great to, to learn more. So I think we're ready to just turn it over to Meg. Meg, you good to go on this?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to ask Ariane if we could try the video and if the sound works. We'll move forward with the video. I've got my colleague here to contest if it's working on YouTube as well on that stream and then we can go from there.
Rivers to rockets, telegrams to telescopes, trains to trails, museums to murals. Mid-Atlantic history.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. We did also send the video out to all the authority members at a time. If you all had a chance to view it on your own and we can send it afterwards as well if you did not. So we're gonna give it just a few minutes try on the audio and if we can't get it going, then we will make sure to redistribute it so everyone can view it on their own time after the meeting.
You all have to see this. It's really.
Oh, okay. Oddly enough, Valerie Woodall in my office across from me said it was working on YouTube for a while, but now has turned off. So I am happy to present with the slides and make sure that folks have time to see the video on their own time.
Andrew, if you want to go ahead and I know you're working on it right now. Oh, there you go. Thank you so much.
Is on display in Prince George's. Rivers to rockets, telegrams to telescopes, trains to trails, museums to murals. Mid-Atlantic history is on display in Prince George's County, Maryland. Connected by the Anacostia River, historic US Route One and miles of trails. Northern Prince George's County boasts a network of amenities and attractions for residents and visitors alike. The Battle of Bladensburg is one of the most significant events in the War of 1812. An American loss that led to the burning of the US Capitol. Explore the impact of the war on American democracy at Bladensburg Waterfront Park on the Anacostia River. College Park is home to the world's oldest continuously operating airport and served as witness to breakthroughs in aviation technology, all of which is ready for exploration at the Aviation Museum. The city of Bowie is bursting with history with city-run museums about railroads, equestrian history, and the vintage lovers National Capitol Radio and Television Museum. Mount Rainier and Hyattsville bring the art to the party with small vibrant main streets full of shops, restaurants and galleries and a mural at every turn. And best of all, most of these tripworthy places are connected by metro, bus and paved trails, perfect for biking or walking. Prince George's County's attractions and assets are well represented by Anacostia Trails Heritage Area as well as the Gateway Arts District. Prince George's County Arts and Humanities Commission. Experience Prince George's. Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission. Star Spangled Banner National Historic Trail and Scenic Byway. Together with many more partners, investments in cultural tourism, all ages programming, recreational trails and support of the arts has a documented public and economic positive impact. Investing in cultural tourism is not just good for tourists. Since being certified by the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority 20 years ago, the designation, advocacy and community-based efforts have brought $2.75 million in heritage tourism funding to northern Prince George's County. In 2019, an independent study calculated the heritage area's impact at $36.1 million annually, including helping to support 565 local jobs. Across Maryland, the State Heritage Area Program contributes $2.4 billion to Maryland's economy. With numbers supporting what we know to be true about the positive impact of using public history to increase cultural understanding and creating trails to connect communities to social recreation and self-exploration. Now is the time to expand the service area of the heritage area. Large swaths of central and southern Prince George's County do not currently have access to the grant-making, advocacy or regional marketing benefits of being part of a state-certified heritage area. Heritage Area's boundaries are carefully drawn to connect historical themes across a cultural landscape. And we've started the process of identifying towns, museums, parks and trails that when unified as a countywide heritage area will help illustrate Prince George's County's place in mid-Atlantic and national history. Key areas in the proposed expanded heritage area include the heart of Upper Marlboro. All that the Potouxent River has to teach us about ecology, agriculture and conservation. Thousands of years of human history along the Potomac River and into Piscataway Park and enduring black-led communities from Fairmount Heights at the DC border to Eagle Harbor on the Potouxent. Efforts are underway to continue to study the historic themes connecting trails and individual sites that will come together as part of an expanded and enhanced Prince George's County cultural tourism overlay. Municipalities and nonprofits in the larger area will be eligible for state heritage tourism funding, technical assistance for visitor readiness and be part of national marketing campaigns. We hope to have good news to report as the process continues. Until then, please visit atha.org/boundry. Donate to our efforts to help you to explore all that Prince George's County has to offer.
Okay, Meg, we'll get the presentation up and and share with everybody. Boundary expansion and for the purposes of the new members, just keep in mind, this is one of the duties of the, of the authority is to approve boundary expansions. And so this is why we're bringing it to you today and we've been able to make the timing work out so that we could have it as part of this special meeting and we'll be asking you for action on this. And so we'll let Meg proceed and show you what this is all about. So Meg, I think we're ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much Secretary Flora, who has now seen the video, I know at least twice. And I appreciate the, the digital applause and for some of the other Heritage Area Authority members who were also at our public hearing last week. Again, thank you. I really hope folks enjoyed being able to experience some of this in person and meet some of our colleagues. But for the purposes of today, I'm thrilled to, in the next 10 to 15 minutes, share with you about five years of work. The Anacostia Trails Heritage Area was certified in 2001. The organization of which I'm the executive director was purposely created to become the management entity. And we've enjoyed and been proud of being that partner to the MHAA program and to our local and regional colleagues here in Prince George's County. Andrew, you can change the slide. So we were right there on the heels in 2001 of this program, you know, coming online and being an opportunity here in Prince George's. Really it came together from the grassroots level. We have folks in Prince George's. We have a lot of municipalities. This is really an opportunity for a lot of municipal leaders and community leaders to come together and try and take advantage of this new program. So over the last 20 years, we've represented about 100 square miles of northern Prince George's County, primarily the Anacostia River watershed as well as the historic Route One corridor. So if you can visualize that or reference back in your mind to the video, that's about the space that we are looking at. Also, over those past 20 years and Andrew, you can advance the slide. I like to say that we're involved in four major areas, which is arts, history, culture and nature. And I'll give you examples of just a couple of the projects that we're particularly proud of. For related to art, we've been involved in arts capital projects. Specifically, I want to highlight capital projects such as Pyramid Atlantic Art Center in Hyattsville where I am right now, where offices are, Sis' Tavern in North Brentwood, Greenbelt Museum, Oh, Greenbelt Theater in Greenbelt, as well as the whole, the whole Gateway Arts District. As it relates to history, can't have a meeting about our heritage area without referencing the War of 1812. It was a, the 200th anniversary was a major milestone in our organization's ability to mount such a large anniversary campaign. And I'll tell you what we've learned is, is paying off as we also co-lead the Prince George's 250 group here. As it relates to culture, Andrew, you can go to the next slide. We've been involved in the research and installation of wayfinding signs across historic sites related to centuries of history. You can go to the next slide. And then as it relates to nature, we have been a part of the planning, I think, are representative of the purpose of heritage areas. And as you can tell, just from the video and the projects, we're really excited about the work that we do. So Andrew, you can go to the next slide. This is a good map to orient you to what this expansion potentially means. As I said, we represent about 100 square miles of Prince George's County. Prince George's County is 499 square miles. In the past, 2017, we did make a little mini expansion of about 20 square miles. But pretty much as soon as we did that in 2015, 2017, we started the process of investigating further expansion. I think that just kind of whet the appetite to say, what more can we do and how can we better represent the county? So with that in mind, with funding from MHAA as well as our county planning commission, Historic Preservation Commission, excuse me, we were able to fund two studies related to our proposed expansion. And those studies were completed by folks also listed in strategic plan earlier who are renowned for, you know, in many ways, creating and and evolving the concept of heritage tourism. So we've got two really great reports that this request is based off of. I typically have one handy. This is our feasibility study. And we also have a boundary situation analysis. Hopefully those were in the packet and provide a much more detailed view of the extent of the research that we did. I do want to say it's a thoughtful process. I inherited this project. But I also, in 2021, when I took over as executive director, but we had time to pause and we've continued to look at this in different directions. It's not a foregone conclusion that that's this countywide approach would be our approach, but it has ended up for us being the wisest way to approach this. So I want to make those just kind of precursor statements. One of the other needs that I think obviously also highlighted in the report are that throughout the course of any day, Atha enjoys receiving emails and phone calls from people who find us from many of our keywords, Anacostia Trails Heritage Area. And we get some really interesting folks that want to work with us or learn more from us. And it really is kind of a bummer when we have to say, oh, we can work with you, but we can't quite work with you in this way because you're not part of the capital H, capital A heritage area. And sometimes that boundary just ends up becoming a little bit tricky for us to engage in the countywide projects that we think would have the most impact and really meet the intention of this program. Full stop. So I'm going to provide a couple of examples. Footnote examples of programs and projects that are currently excluded. Again, just examples. Andrew, you can go to the next slide. And you can go to that one. Okay, great. So in southern Prince George's County, the Serat House is a county-owned and operated historic site. It has gone far beyond what traditional interpretation has done at the Serat House. As my colleague Veronica Galardo, who runs this house museum, says, "A lot more happened than the seven minutes" that John Wilkes Booth was there. So this is a program and a project and site that is currently excluded from the current boundary. Next slide. Another site that's currently excluded that we've been able to work with through other programs is the Town of Eagle Harbor. We also have the support of the mayor of the Town of Eagle Harbor. This is a legacy waterfront black community. And they have a pending National Registered District nomination. And they also have a ready-to-go cultural tourism plan. But right now remain ineligible to receive MHAA funding again because of the boundary. Andrew, next slide. There is a density along in the Potomac River near Piscataway Park, near Alice Ferguson Foundation, near Acapulco Foundation, where we know that there is just rich cultural history, historic sites that welcome thousands of students and families and hikers and bikers in southern Prince George's also excluded. Important to note here that this is a really a dense area where there's a lot of potential for state and federal cultural tourism dollars to come together through the Southern Maryland National Heritage Area. Andrew, next slide. Um, again, I mentioned Prince George's County has a, an embarrassment of wonderful municipalities. Many of those are right outside of Washington DC and have a rich legacy of, again, black municipal leadership as well as civil. as well as civil rights advocacy in this area. Fairmont Heights specifically related to education history. In this case, Fairmont Heights, we've been able to include sites related to Dazwell Brooks in our countywide Prince George's County Civil Rights Trail because we had NPS funding. Otherwise, we would not have been able to include sites like this, again, because they're outside the boundary. Got one more example. One of the best examples, maybe because it's the worst example, is this wonderful place called Creative Suitland, which is operated by Joe's Movement Emporium. It's a public-private partnership between Joe's Movement Emporium, which is a nonprofit, and Prince George's County. They came together to completely reimagine a otherwise nondescript suburban location and create this absolutely vibrant arts and cultural center. Um, Joe's Movement Emporium has another location in Mount Rainier. You've seen it in the video. We support Joe's and their wonderful programming in their Mount Rainier location, but we simply can't do the same at this Creative Suitland location. Again, simply because of the geography, not because the work that they're doing there is not as compelling as in other locations. It is, in fact, Joe's Movement Emporium, who helped us with that video that we all watched. So they're wonderful partners and we'd love to be able to include Creative Suitland in our official partnerships as well. So you can go to the next slide. So the process, as I mentioned, is about five years old or five years young, however you'd like to think about it. During the reports, during the process of the reports, we identified 13 municipalities and over 60 of the most traditional cultural tourism sites. So picture National Registered Districts, churches, galleries, parks, museums, things like that. That is the most conservative estimate of sites that could potentially be included in a countywide expansion. Again, because those are probably the most traditional. I'd like to note that the sites that are included in this expansion all connect to our existing foundational interpretive themes, which were developed in 2001 and 2003. I'd also like to note that any sites that are within the expanded heritage area boundary would still go through the same state-level grant process. So there's no, there's no quick line. So still would go through the annual MHAA grant cycle. Go to the next slide. Okay, great. So really exciting news. And what brings us here today is that in March, we were able to have a county resolution passed that was very carefully researched by the Prince George's County Planning Department. Because our management plan is a functional master plan that's on file at the Prince George's County Planning Department. So being a state-certified heritage area really does come with specific distinctions as it relates to planning, grant eligibility, not just for MHAA grants, but many other state and other sources of grants. So it was really important, in fact, required that we had county support. And finding the best way to do this took a bit of time, but we're really proud that this county resolution came to fruition and was passed just last March. So that's really what brings us here today. After that, all those kind of checklist things that we had to do, the research, the stakeholder meetings, site visits in this county resolution really bring us to where we are today. So I think with that, I'm happy to conclude my remarks, but certainly open to any questions. And however, Secretary Flora would like to have the, after my presentation, however, you would like that to happen. Thank you.
Secretary Flora, you're on mute.
Hi, I said I love the presentation. Now I know some of the additional creative talent behind it. So thank you for that. Um, what I'd like to do is acknowledge first the authority members that were at the public hearing to see if any of them have anything they would like to add. You know, from being there and hearing some of the testimony and anything. And is anyone from that grouping? I don't have that list in front of me, but anyone that was at the hearing that might want to first make any comment.
I'd be happy to say that it was amazing. You guys did a great job. The people who spoke in favor of your effort, and of course, there was nobody there not speaking in favor of it, were very articulate about the whys and the passion that exists behind your project. So good job.
Thanks, Sandy. Tara, you were there. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I would echo Sandy. It was so important to hear the mayor and others from Eagle Harbor. I had to see how I and Anna Rundle could get there, not directly. And also, I have my whole list of places that I know. The Serat House, Bladensburg Park. I'm going to go to the Aviation Museum, which already is in. But it was thrilling and good job.
Thanks, Tara. Anyone else that was at the hearing that might want to say a few words from your witnessing of the court there?
I was going to jump in and just say, great job, Meg, as always, in the great work that you do. Of course, I'm biased as I work in Prince George's County. And I will say that unfortunately, because of the conflict of interest, I will not vote on the boundary amendment. That said, I think that, you know, what I will say to the rest of the board members, the rest of the authority members, that this is something that's very important. And I think it very much speaks to the heritage areas authority discussion around diversity and equity as we look at the entire county of Prince George's County. And we look at who's excluded from the area now. Very clear that this will help to remedy that diversity and equity that we are, that we say that we're about. So this will back up that saying with action. And also, Meg, you didn't include another site I put in my background today, the originally Rosenwald School, which is another site that I directly oversee, which will be included in the expanded boundary, which also speaks to kind of the great heritage tourism. We've had National Park Service interest in our site. We've inspired the national legislation to build the Julius Rosenwald National Park. And so, you know, these are the types of sites that you want in your heritage area, not just for what these sites can get from the heritage area, but what we can also offer in terms of boosting the profile of Anacostia Trails Heritage Area.
Great, thanks, Dennis. And we'll make sure and note during voting time, the exception. So thank you. Anyone else that was at the hearing first? And if not, then anyone else generally from the authority that have questions or comments for Meg? We see a hand up, Elizabeth.
So I think it's interesting as we see the Heritage Areas Program expand and mature, where it really started as a very targeted, focused program. Focus, the idea was that it would focus on areas that were, the geographic boundaries were rather tight. And although that also evolved over time as heritage areas were certified, and I think Anacostia Trails Heritage Area was one of the first out of the gate. It was a really early one. And so you saw a very compact boundary. And so, Meg, I feel like, you know, this, what you're proposing, which I think others are thinking about too, to go from these more targeted areas to basically a countywide boundary. I think we're going to see, if yours is successful, we will see a proliferation of these. And we will see the Heritage Areas Program really become, they're going to be countywide or multiple county heritage areas, quite possibly. And I don't know that I necessarily have a problem with that, but it is quite an evolution where we're not really going to be talking about this as a targeted program. It's going to be more expansive in terms of who can access the grants and so forth. And so, you know, recognizing that you're sort of the first one out of the gate to really make this change in terms of an expanded boundary. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on that and how we sort of position the program so that if it becomes one of, these are county heritage areas, you know, you know, how we talk about that? I mean, certainly, we talk about it as being more inclusive because it doesn't always make sense. Why would a really important heritage site outside of a boundary not be able to access those grants, you know, and benefit in the way that others can? But that is a question in my mind in terms of the health and vitality of the program going forward and how we talk about it with the General Assembly and so forth.
Any reflections, Meg, on sort of your decision to go in that direction? And what that might, things for us to consider as that moves forward and maybe continues to evolve?
Yes, that is an incredibly thoughtful question of which I cannot give as thoughtful, perhaps, of an answer. Certainly based on Elizabeth's, you know, experience with the heritage areas with Maryland's Short Trust. What I will say is that, you know, during the process of our smaller expansion in 2015 and 2017, you know, that was, I would say, you know, pre-targeted and almost specifically choosing sites to include. And I think that that was one approach. And I think what we did by taking a whole countywide approach and really saying, hey, what doesn't fit? And then the answer was really nothing didn't fit. So when you look at the map of the four cluster areas, which is how our consultant determined it, very few areas, you know, kind of end up not in that, you know, sort of density of areas. And then you really start to realize the the problem of that creating exclusions. The other thing I'll say about the evolution of heritage areas is that I think heritage areas were perceived as a program. And each heritage area was basically a program. What I'll say is we are limitless organizations. And then I think over time, the heritage areas themselves have developed to hold an umbrella of many programs. So of which, the heritage area and our role as a certified management entity and all that we do to try to invest in and direct state funds for cultural tourism. There's so many other components that, over 20 years, we've built this the trust of allied organizations as well. So I think that that also has to do with the maturity of heritage areas as you start to get some really great partnerships that you just want to just be able to keep going with. One or two more things. Here in Prince George's, we have an incredibly strong, because we're part of the Maryland, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. So we have an incredibly strong countywide, and I'm sure other heritage areas do also. So it's like, oh, I can work with some of the heritage sites that are operated by Prince George's Parks, but not the other ones. And so especially here, maybe some of that friction is felt in such a way that, you know, once the reports came in, obviously, we also took a look at the capacity of our organization as, you know, it's a small nonprofit. Really, all of those things align. But I agree, I think it's always been a thoughtful process, whether that was small boundaries or countywide boundaries, multi-county boundaries. And I think the through line there is that they're all very well rationed. There's rationale behind all of it. But perhaps some of it has evolved or changed.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for that thoughtfulness. I have Pete next in the queue and then Nick.
Yeah, thank you. The following question to that is, and I think we saw this years ago, actually, in the one that I'm most familiar with in my part of the state, the Stories of the Chesapeake Heritage Area, which is as we, as we build these larger, and that was a larger heritage area from the outset. As we build these larger heritage areas, the interpretive job of what binds this together becomes a little bit more challenging. And I think the first cut at Stories of the Chesapeake overwhelmed some people because it felt like a bunch of different layers. And it was a lot, it was a lot to weigh through. What are the, what are the interpretive challenges that you perceive in this expansion for ATHA?
Hi, Pete. Thank you for your question and your example. So I think that one of the highlights of this process was that we looked at the existing interpretive themes. And as much as a historian can wordsmith a historical theme, they do boil down, as long as you can make them with as many semicolons as you can think of, they really boil down to the essence of arts, history, culture, and nature. That said, we know that there are sites in southern Prince George's that directly connect to those even longer, more specific heritage themes. And that bared out in the report. What I also say is I think that there are people, heritage tourists and folks that, you know, they kind of want the potpourri tour. So, right, you want to listen to NPR because you want the five different stories in a row and you're going to learn something new. Or you want the podcast. You want to listen to the same, the same topic, but you want to listen to it from four different, four or five different angles. So I think that there is a way for heritage areas to provide interpretive opportunities within the intent of the historical themes without limiting themselves to a too strict of an itinerary or theme.
Thank you. Next, next in the queue?
Yeah, not surprisingly, Megan has done a fantastic job with this. Very impressed. And I think that, you know, it's deserving of the resources that Prince George's County has. I just wanted to comment on Elizabeth's question. And just in a different perspective that I think the rest of the authority might want to think about with the expansion this way. You know, I think maybe in years past, I maybe would have had a reservation about sort of heading to this like countywide approach. But I think the way that it's been portrayed and it's been explained helps a lot. I also think that we can't be unaware of the reality of what's happening with historic preservation at this moment and in this time, and the huge potential for drawback of federal support. And so our state heritage area program is critical to the future of historic preservation. That's one bucket of what Megan describes. But, you know, it is, it is critical to the future of that. And we're going to need every tool at our disposal to fund and support efforts like these across the state. So if that means in the future, most of our heritage areas operate on a countywide basis, then that may just be an evolution that we need to accept as a new body and something that we have to support. So, you know, I think for those reasons, I'm just, I'm very supportive of it. And I think that, again, not surprisingly, but Megan and Atha has done a great job. And I think this will be a good model moving forward if other counties want to adopt this approach in sort of understanding why this needs to be done in the context of the resource, but in the context also of the funding ecosystem we're now living in. So good work, Megan.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick. Any other questions for Meg or comments about this expansion that's in front of us before we move into the next segment, which is public comment? Anything else? Okay. Meg, we may have some more questions for you again after the public comment, but great job. And I just want to add, my recollection is that all testimony and letters were all in support. There was nothing submitted in opposition throughout this process, which was a very thorough and exhaustive process. And I agree with Nick, is a fabulous model for others to utilize if more decide to go in this direction in the future. So I want to make sure that that's further on the record that we have not received so far. We have public comment next. Any, anything of opposition? Is that the case, Ariana? Just want to confirm that.
That is correct. We have not received any opposition. There were 12 letters of support that were submitted, and they were all in support of this expansion. I just wanted to state a few things for the record about process. If this is a good time for that, Secretary?
Okay.
Just for the record, I wanted the authority to know that Atha submitted their proposal to expand the boundary on April 7, 2025. And per our regulations, the authority needs to make a decision whether to approve, approve with modifications, or disapprove the proposal within 90 days. the proposal within 90 days. That puts us at July 6. We are very much on target. One of the other requirements is the public hearing that Secretary Flora mentioned that took place last week. I wanted to confirm from the staff perspective that all of the materials that are required for consideration were submitted and everything is in order. All of those materials will share with all the authority members via email. If someone did not receive them, please let me know. And I think that is all I need to state for the record. So yes, we can move on to public comment.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for making sure we had all of that in the record. And Meg, before we move to public comment, anything else that you want to share with us?
Sure. I would just love to say again, thank you, everybody, for your consideration and good questions. And as always, I enjoyed the process, the journey, I guess. My hope is that we can become countywide for the reasons mentioned ahead. So, thank you. That's all.
Okay, great. Thank you. We have Alana that has raised a hand to show a comment or question on this topic?
I might just have a comment. I'm sorry I wasn't able to respond earlier on time. I just wanted to say fantastic job, Megan. So many of the places that will be brought, brought within this boundary, I just believe that being able to connect that history, being able to connect that culture, especially right now, is just so important. And for me, two of the places that you listed were home. Actually, I'll show you. This is, this is a watercolor idea of my grandparents' cottage in Eagle Harbor. So this is really meaningful. And I think that it will bring so much in terms of unknown and untold stories as well, contributing to that history. So, great job, Megan.
Thanks, Alana. Okay, we're going to move into public comment. And I know we have some of our heritage area directors lined up. And but I'm going to turn to Ariana of who else may have lined up and let you go ahead and identify who you have on your list at least. And then we can always open it up. But this is our public comment and opportunity for anyone out there. And I know you've got a lot of supporters out there with your sister heritage areas, Meg. So Ariana, you want to help us tee this up?
Yes, thank you, Secretary Flora. We had three folks sign up for public comment, and the first is Liz Chateau.
Hi there. So, well, first of all, with regard to the boundary amendment, I certainly am excited to see this happen. And I hope to follow suit with the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. I have to say, I'm only speaking for myself right now. I'm not speaking for my board, but I'm going to look carefully at what, what Meg's done so well here. Is this also a good time for me to speak to the strategic plan? And I have a couple of other items that I just wanted to?
Yeah, this is the time for anybody out there that wants to raise anything with the authority to raise it. So, Liz, go ahead.
So for the strategic plan, this is minor, but I think it's on slide 17. There is a reference to fundraising essentially by the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority, at least, I think it needs clarification. I have not been able to tell whether it means the MHAA or the program will raise funds, secure funds, that they will then make available to certified heritage areas for initiatives or whatever, or if that just means they're going to research things that we might look into. And to me, that's an important distinction. And for myself, we already kind of do the latter. But sure, I'd be, I'd be interested in whether you find some more money that we can tap. So just wanted to put that out there. And then my other comments are just like, they're, they're things I wanted to state, and team can follow up later. This has to do with the grant review that we're, we're in the middle of now. Thank you. I got Martha's list of what dates we're going to be meeting with panels and, and doing those sort of pitches for our, our grant projects. I would love to know who's on the different panels that we're talking to. I have two. The reason being that I think I can be more efficient with my comments. If I know who it is, I might be able to frame my comments anticipating who, who's going to be there. And similarly, I would encourage those folks who have been assigned our grants to send their questions in advance. We have a lot of application, and it's really hard to do that even in two 30-minute sections. So I wanted to just plant that as a seed. I also, I have some questions, maybe you can answer later, about how does this work when we have two panels, and each panel has a number one ranking, and a number two ranking? And then how do, how do these get, you know, integrated? So we know what order? That's just a confusing algorithm for us. And then I also wanted to make a note, I sent Ariana a message earlier. I have an inquiry from one of my national parks about a possible emergency grant. And I know that would need to move very quickly. And I put them on hold because I said I, you know, I need to get a thumbs up from you first. So just noting that, I don't know if Ariana saw the email yet or not. That was this morning. And then another thing I'm really interested in is more information on the federal funding to SHPOs, the, the whole concern about the elimination of the Historic Preservation Fund. I know that's going to, you know, that's, that's a big impact for the Maryland Historical Trust. And I can imagine that we, in the heritage areas, would also feel some of that. But of course, we're concerned about our colleagues at the trust. So those are my items for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate that. And I think several of those items might be able to be included in our closing remarks. And what we can't do there, we can, we can also do a follow-up with.
Thank you.
But we'll, yeah, well noted. So we'll try to maybe include those where we can. Who's, who's next, Ariana?
Lucille Walker.
Lucille.
Hey, everyone. Suddenly, I've gone dark, apparently, but I'm here. Wanted to note, again, we're speaking at the end as public, although, you know, you did ask a number of questions about who was there at Meg's hearing. And of course, I was there. And of course, we are very much in support of these efforts because our national heritage area takes in that Southern Prince George's region. We have the state heritage area boundaries, we have national heritage area boundaries. And this way, the national heritage area can see those areas grow even more, because when we do have our federal granting ability, and those areas can then apply for the Maryland Heritage Area Authority funding, they can match, you know, federal to state in a very clear way. And I think that's very positive for those organizations. And also, there may be some confusions because they are part of our national heritage area. So very much Eagle Harbor and Serat House and all these amazing sites are definitely vital to our national. Meg and I work super well together, and we'll work out kind of methods and procedures going forwards that kind of helps this be a little more seamless and not, because it gets confusing. It's confusing for people right now that I have two different heritage area boundaries, both state and national. So we're really pleased, though, that this is going forward and hope that you'll support it. We were happy to be there and be in support. And also, to the questions that were being raised by Elizabeth and Nick also addressed and others, I think, too, the national heritage area program is part of the discussion when you start talking about counties. I mean, there's a discussion on the national level about states being involved, how many states have national heritage area. And then we're talking about counties and national heritage area. But I'll pause for a minute since Pete just raised his hand.
Pete, is this specific to something Lucille's brought up, because this is our public comment time? So it's not really a Q and A?
It is. It is, which, which is, was, was there unintended expansion of the Southern Maryland Heritage Area into this area that's now proposed for the ATHA?
Unintended? I'm not sure what you mean. We very, very much intended as our national heritage area boundary had to include Southern Prince George's because it was essential to the story that we needed to tell. So that was included in our federal boundaries and in our federal designation by Congress. We had not necessarily intended a Maryland, we, a Maryland extension because we were aware that Anacostia was looking at the expansion, and we were in support of whatever gives them that region the support they need. Also,
That addresses the question.
Okay. And I think there's a sort of tradition that you don't have so far. It's not a rule that two state heritage areas being in the same county may also be problematic. I don't know that it would be, but that seems to have been part of the discussions in years past. And so then just quickly, with the strategic plan, with your org chart, again, definitions are important. And we really are going to be delving in, I think, I hope, very seriously in the implementation section of this plan. I understand that this is more overarching. But as we look at the org chart, the organizational framework of the Maryland Heritage Areas Program, to Meg's point, heritage areas are independent, we have a big umbrella of many programs. And it lists, the Maryland Heritage Areas Program is highlighted where the staff is, and they're essential, of course, they're certainly the program staff. But I don't know if you want to list that as the program. And then also, we have the local certified heritage areas work directly with the project grantees in that particular slide. And there's no connecting line between the local heritage areas and the project grantees. We certainly understand that the ultimate decision-making for those grants is under the authority, but we work and help develop those grants with the non-capital capital grants very closely. It's a big part of the work that we do. And I don't know if there's a way that that chart can, can show that. So again, and then also in your engagement and participation chart, you were listed as the coordinating team meetings. We do have some issues that we feel those weren't as effective as we had hoped they'd be. However, we appreciate them. And we hope within the implementation phase that we can really hammer out more clearly some of the questions that we had and concerns that we had.
Thank you, Lucille. Others, Ariana, that we have previously identified to comment?
Bridget Cardy had signed up, but I believe that there is a personal conflict that has taken her away from the meeting today. So Bridget, are you with us? Yeah, I don't think so. So that is everyone that signed up for public comment ahead of the meeting.
Okay, great. And I assume nothing else has come in at the last minute, so we should be good.
I'm not seeing any other emails, no.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Well, thank, thank you all. Really appreciate everyone's involvement in this very important program to Nick's. And I'm sure everyone's thoughts, what's going on around historic preservation and culture these days, there is a lot of need. But let's just maybe touch on that maybe towards the end. Right now, I want to move us toward our action items. And the first action item, of course, is the approval of the strategic plan. This is the proposed resolution that we've put forth for you all to consider. And so with consideration of any of the comments that have just come in, and the amendments are basically what you just saw with those highlighted amendments is what you would be voting on. And so out there, would, I would like to take a motion to approve if anyone's out there. Pete has raised his hand. Anyone second?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Nathan, second? Okay. Any comments, questions before I call for the vote? Okay, then I'd like to call for the vote. First of all, I will ask for abstentions. So anyone abstaining on this one, please raise your hand. Not seeing any, any, any opposed? Not seeing any? Okay, then everyone raise your hand if you are in favor of approving the strategic plan. And I am going to assume, since we had no one in the other categories, that everyone on the call from the authority is then in favor of approving the strategic plan. And Martha, you have a full record of who is here and present and voting right now. Are you good?
Yep, just give me one second. I'm noting that it's approved unanimously, but I am going to also take down names. So.
Okay, that's right.
Cliffier, Cliffier, who's Doster Newman. Let's see. Just give me one more minute.
I wanted to note that I believe Jeff Newman joined us after roll call. Jeff, are you with us?
Yes, I got you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Secretary Flora, are you in favor? I assume.
Yes, yes. Usually, usually it's a tiebreaker. Yes, I'm definitely in favor.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I have the vote.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you all. And thank you for everyone's time. This has been a long process. And, you know, we absolutely understand that strategic plan is the umbrella. We do have still a lot of work to do, because we do have to develop the implementation plan, and that will be, yeah, another layer, and there will be engagement involved in that. And that's the piece that honestly, there's a few things that are happening out there in the world that are a bit of a moving target right now. So, so we will, I think, be in a position to frame that and, you know, share some of the process and everything at our, at our July meeting in terms of how that's going to start unfolding. And I'm sure they're starting to unfold even before then. So thank you all. The next vote we have in front of us is for the boundary expansion of the Anacostia Trails Heritage Area as it has been presented and proposed. If anyone has their hands up, take it down if it's part of the original vote, just so I know that it's not a question. I'm still seeing, okay, good. And so with that, Tara, is that a question? Or is that from the previous vote that you have your hand up? You're muted. Okay, good. We're good. Okay. Okay, so we have in front of us this resolution that would be the official following procedure and requirements for the, to approve the request by the Anacostia Trails Heritage Area and Prince George's County to amend the boundary of the Anacostia Trails Heritage Area to all of Prince George's County. And then you see the full resolution there that we would be taking the vote on. So with that in mind, I'd like to see if anyone would like a motion to approve. Okay, we have Nathan first. Is there a second out there? And that would be Nick. Thank you. We have one abstention. Are there any other abstentions out there to report? Is there anyone not in favor of this boundary expansion? Hands. Then everyone raise your hand if you are in favor. And let's ensure that Martha has what she needs for that. And yes, I am in favor. I'll put my hand up to you. You know, when you're ready.
Yep, just give me one. I can just furiously type in. Okay, thank you.
I do want to note that, did you get Melissa Archer?
I did.
Okay, great. Because I know Melissa's joining us over phone. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, great. Well, motion is approved. Congratulations, Meg, and everyone involved in that effort. Great job. And really, it was a, it was a model, I think, process and approach, really, really well done. So congratulations. And Ariana, when does that become effective? And how does that work?
So for an amended amendment to go into effect, we have four requirements. Approval of the authority, which has just happened. Publication by the authority in Maryland's Online Geographic Information System, or our Medusa system, needs to be posted on the website of the Maryland Heritage Areas Program web pages on the Maryland Historical Trust website. And then we have to, program staff will be responsible for this. We need to notify the county clerk of the counties in which the certified heritage area is located that this approval happened. So we have a couple of steps to move through, but we should be able to move through those pretty quickly. And then we will send out written notice to Atha once all of those have been completed.
Okay, great. Okay, so that should all happen fairly quickly. And we'll get that out. So I see, congratulations once again, and thank you, everyone. So Pete, I see you have your hand up. What do we have? What do we have?
Sorry, that was from the previous vote.
Oh, okay.
Take it down.
Okay, then we are going to move on to closing remarks. We've got a couple of things. One, I know Ariane wants to give a little bit of update about the marketing grant reviewers, and then I think, Ariane, if there is anything you're able to easily respond to in terms of some of the public comments or questions and clarifying items, if you could maybe add that, or we can ensure we can follow up on that. And then I have a few closing comments also regarding the federal funding and some of the concerns that I think we all have.
Sure, thank you. Before I touch on marketing grants, I wanted to just give a really quick update on where we are with our fiscal year 26 grants. We, the local and state reviews are in the process of wrapping up. Actually, the local reviews wrapped up yesterday. We received their prioritized list of funding recommendations. Our state reviewers are still in process. We're going to be moving into small group meetings with our state reviewers starting next week, and then their scores will be due to us at the end of this month. I wanted to give the authority members a heads up that on June 13th, you're going to be receiving an advanced confidential, very confidential, super confidential list of funding recommendations for you all to complete your review. And you will have until the 26th of June to do that review. It's going to be the ranking chart that shows the funding recommendations that are being made by the state grants review panel that take into consideration the local recommendations as well. So you're going to get about a 13-day period to look over that list before we go into the July meeting where we'll be asking for your approval.
And I just want to emphasize the confidential. This is something that we changed our procedures a year or so ago because people felt like there wasn't adequate time for the authority to actually weigh in rather than just rubber stamp what came back to us. And so we're allowing for this period of time to ensure that there's no issues or flags. I will say the review panel process is quite thorough, and so I think that if there are folks who feel like they don't have time and they're just happy with that process, that's just, you know, you don't have to do anything. This is not required. You will have the opportunity to vote, and we do have a pretty thorough process that leads up to this. It's just that time of opportunity, but it is very confidential because it's not final, people don't know until we actually go into that meeting in July. So I just want to emphasize that since we'll be operating by email for some of that. So further emphasis, since we do have a few new folks here. So Ariane?
Yep, just, yep, thank you, just a few more things. The management, marketing, and block grants that come from the heritage area management entities are due on Monday. The staff is going to be reviewing the management and block grants, but for the marketing grants, we are looking for two to four members of the authority to volunteer to serve on a small review panel for those. It would be approximately two to four hours of reading time, you know, on your own schedule, and then one meeting around May 30th. And we usually have about four to six applications. So I am looking for volunteers. We do need volunteers to be able to process those marketing applications, and if there's anyone that is interested, I'll take names now, or you can send me an email.
Ariane, this is Sandy. I would be happy to be on that.
Thank you, Sandy.
I see Melissa's hand up also.
Melissa, I don't know if you can talk with your column, but I'll take that as you're interested and follow up with you.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you.
It's like an auction. If the hand goes up, I'm grabbing it.
I would love to have three, just in case we need a tiebreaker during our deliberations. Anyone else interested or considering, please reach out to me. It would be really helpful to have just one.
Yeah, always follow up with Ariane if you have questions about what it would entail and what's involved, too, if you're kind of on the fence. So I think we can, I'm sure, recruit someone else. But thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to remind folks about the next two upcoming meetings, but maybe you were going to include that in your closing remarks.
Yeah. So, so yes, our next meeting, according to my records, is July 10th. What I am not sure of, it says TBD. Are we doing that in person or virtual? What's the plan?
That is virtual, yep.
Okay, so we'll do that one virtual. July is just so difficult to get people in. So I think, you know, it's really probably the best to do that virtual. However, at the October 22nd meeting that is planned to be in Cumberland, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we're all, you know, I think, concerned about the Western Marylanders right now, and Allegheny and Garrett in particular, and the flooding, you know, governor's out there later today, we're getting updates because that's also part of our Appalachian Regional Commission, in addition to having our heritage area out there. So we're, you know, staying tuned in on that. As I know, Elizabeth Hughes has also raised the question of, you know, our responsibility in terms of emergency management of any cultural or historic or archaeological resources that may be impacted by any of that. So we are closely in touch with the situation out there, and then we will look forward to being in Cumberland in the fall for what are always a wonderful experience of being together in person and doing site visits and whatnot out there. I will mention that the Appalachian Regional Commission Annual Conference of the 13 States is actually in Frostburg this year, just a couple of weeks before that, and we'll be working very closely with all of our partners out there for that also. So really, great, great time out that way. And then I also want to just make it, you know, really clear and known, this was a special meeting today, so we were really focused on these action items, but our meetings will, as always, continue to have a report from the Heritage Area Coalition, as we've done in the past. And then we always, as typical, will include a present, you know, short presentation from a couple of the heritage areas, which we've always done in the past also, because it gives us a better preview into the heritage areas and the work that they're doing. And so that will continue to be part of our regular agendas, and Ariane always organizes that with our heritage area directors and with our coalition co-chairs. And so that is going to continue to be part of our meetings, special one today. So that wasn't part of the presentation. And then the other thing that I want to close with and maybe ask, certainly invite Elizabeth if she wants to say a few words also, you know, there is great concern about what is happening in terms of the defunding of preservation funds and the impact that could be having on basically historic preservation efforts across state and across the country. We are all working closely and monitoring that, not only from the standpoint of impact to our ability to continue to fully staff and address what is really one of the leading programs in the country around historic preservation. That includes cultural, archaeological, in all aspects, but also there's people involved, too, because we have staffing that we are concerned with that are funded through some of those programs. But Elizabeth, could I invite you to say a few more words about that, because I know you're, you're right there on the front line on any of this? Anything you'd want to add to just let folks know?
Sure, so I'll just mention that the Maryland Historical Trust Facebook page, we've just sent out over social media information about this. If you haven't seen it through other social media groups you're part of, or if you did not receive the Preservation Maryland Advocacy Alert that went out earlier this week, the issue before us is that the Historic Preservation Fund, which supports various competitive grant programs as well as annual allocations to state historic preservation offices and tribal historic preservation offices to conduct duties that are allocated to them through the National Historic Preservation Act. Those funds in the president's fiscal year 26 budget have been zeroed out. And so, you know, as an example, the Maryland Historical Trust receives about $1 million from that fund, and it supports 18 positions in whole or in part, as well as subgrants that go out to certified local governments. And aside from the fact that the president's budget, which, you know, Congress is the, has the purse strings, right? So the president, in his budget, gives some guidelines to what he'd like to see, but we won't know until Congress acts. But in this case, the federal fiscal year 25 money also, because the budget was passed so late in the year, those funds still are not forthcoming, and SHIPOs across the country have not received the notification to apply for those annual allocations as well. So there's some concern and confusion about why is the fiscal year 25 money that's already been appropriated not being forthcoming. So we've seen certain state historic preservation offices already laying off staff across the country because they're not able to make payroll because they're not receiving these federal funds and the time to advocate on behalf of the Historic Preservation Fund. If this is something you care about, and SHIPOs is now, and we're encouraging folks to take action by contacting your member of Congress to let them know your thoughts about this. And as the secretary said, this is, you know, this will have serious repercussions in terms of really the national historic preservation framework. It isn't just about Maryland. Maryland really benefits from a lot of support from state government for historical and cultural resource preservation and enhancement programs, although we would be impacted if this money is not forthcoming. But this really is an attack on potentially the, you know, the National Historic Preservation Act and how federalism works and duties that are delegated to the states by the federal government are carried out by the states. So.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth. Before we go to Nick, I just, I just want to further reinforce, too, that there are other executive orders. So any, any federal funding, hang on, we have oftentimes has had restrictions associated to it regarding DEI, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with that also. We haven't received any direct orders on that yet, but this is a continuum. So, so much work has been done to put forth populations and history that's been left behind that I know in Maryland, you know, we're very committed to continuing to ensure that that is not the case, but this federal funding issue is a huge concern. So Nick, I want to, you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to underscore, I mean, obviously, Elizabeth has it all exactly right. And, you know, this, this money that supports the Historic Preservation Fund, some of you may know, not, maybe not all do, it comes from offshore oil leases, so it does not come from taxpayer dollars directly. And, you know, I think reaching out to legislators, I know, it puts our, our friends in state government in a uncomfortable position to really push for advocacy, but, you know, this is critical for them, but we're comfortable saying it's time to contact Congress. We have been doing that at Preservation Maryland directly, and I'm also pleased that I can now report publicly that Sarah Elfrid, who left the Maryland State House and now went to Congress, is one of the Democratic co-leads on the reauthorization of the Historic Preservation Fund. So not only are we facing down sort of this issue with if the money will be released this year, but then it's what will be appropriated next year, and will the fund be reauthorized as well? And so she's on a bipartisan group. So Maryland is very well represented yet again at the national level on historic preservation. So that's some of the good news. And the other good news, too, is that, you know, Representative Harris on the shore holds a key position in appropriations. And so those people on the shore who are constituents of Congressman Harris should reach out and let the office know how critical this funding is and all the good work that it does on the eastern shore of Maryland. You know, and this is funding that, you know, as Elizabeth says, and you can look at their site, you can look at ours and find the information on it, but this allows historic tax credits to be reviewed and, you know, funds, survey research work, and just kind of keeps the gears of historic preservation working, and has been funded by the federal government since 1976. It was authorized in '66, but it's been, you know, as Elizabeth said, we have information on our site on how to take action, and inviting legislators out to see these projects in the field is something that we're working on as well. So, yeah, we're obviously very concerned about this, too.
Great, thanks, Nick, and thank you for all the work you all are doing. And in a nonprofit seat, you do have more, I think, freedom than we do, certainly at state government, but Elizabeth, I presume, for instance, with Congressman Harris, for instance, I mean, if we needed to provide a list of projects that have been funded in that region, we could probably pull that if needed, I presume.
Certainly, yeah.
Part of these advocacy efforts and everything. So, so yes, we just really, really want to make sure people have information and understand, you know, how big of a deal this is. It's a really big deal. And this is not the only topic area. This is happening with our Chesapeake Bay programs, it is happening with our climate programs, it's happening with multiple programs across the state, but obviously, with this group, we want to draw attention to this. I will also add that if you missed it, the General Assembly did indicate that if we have more than a billion-dollar impact to the state of Maryland, there's more than likely going to be a special session in the fall to really look at what that means to our total state budget impact. So that obviously has been being monitored across the board in terms of overall impact on the state budget. So even though a budget has been approved and certain pieces of legislation are still being signed, you know, piece by piece over the next few weeks, yeah, this is a moving target. So we're all just trying to stay on top of it. We are almost at time, but I just really wanted to make sure you all had this information. So thank you, Elizabeth and Nick, for reporting that out. Any other comments or questions before we adjourn the meeting? Feel free to follow up staff if there's anything that you can do and any way we can give you additional information on these, on these topics. We appreciate it, we appreciate the public comment, and I do believe that a lot of that, we have it all recorded, and we'll make sure that we can do some follow-up on that, too. So, thank you all. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, thank you, Nick, second?
Second.
Okay, that's Pete. Okay, everyone in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your time today for the special meeting. Take care, everyone.
Thank you all very much.